It is 1:23 and we reconvened from the lunch break. At this time-
Welcome back.
Welcome back.
I had faster service than you all did.
Well, good. At this time, I would like to go to 7D, which is approval of the no new revenue rate and voter approval tax rates for Denton County for tax year 2024. We have our tax assessor collector, Michelle French. Good afternoon and thank you for your patience. Michelle.
Sorry. For now, so it is time. It is time to go through our rates. We've calculated the tax rates and it is time to be able to report these to Commissioner's Court so that can help you to complete what you need to do in order to propose your rate. So I'm just going to go down the grid here and then if there's any questions afterwards, if it's something I can answer for you, I'll be happy to. If not, I'll be happy to get you an answer when I can. So thank you. Thank you for being able to do this. It's always an honor. All right, so we're just going to go for this. So the last year's adopted tax rate was .189485 and in the calculations, the adjusted prior year levy with refunds and tax increment finance zone adjustments gave us an adjusted levy for prior year of $288,863,882. The adjusted current year taxable value is, and that's after subtracting value of new property and throughout the calculation, is $160 billion, 81 million, 688,043, which gives us a 2024 no new revenue tax rate of .180447. That gives us an adjusted, again, for our 2024 voter approval tax rate. We have a adjusted prior levy calculating for the no new revenue M and O rate. That adjusted prior levy is $222,862,722. And again, our current year adjusted taxable value is again the same, $160 billion, 81 million, 688,043. So that gives us a current no new revenue operating rate of .139218. Then our current year voter approval M and O rate, which is adding 1.035, is .144090. Our current year debt rate, which is the rate that's going to service our debt for this year, is .044425. That gives us a current year voter approval rate, which is your maintenance operation in your INS, of .188515. Then we have the unused increment rate of .003887, which gives us a total 2024 voter approval rate adjusted for the unused increment of .192402. So the no new revenue rate is .180447. The total voter approval rate is .192402.
Okay.
Sure.
Members, are there any questions of Mrs. French? Okay, so we need to vote to adopt what she has presented. Correct, Alejandro?
Yes, sir.
Right, members, do we have a motion to adopt, validate her?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? Michelle, I want to thank you for doing this.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for that. All right, let's go back to 7E, which is approval of any appropriate action related to the fiscal year 2025 county budget. I'm going to hand it. We did a lot of preliminary decisions or discussions this morning and I would like to hand it off to Alejandro at this time and then we'll go back and make some further decisions.
Thank you, Judge. So we still have to make a few decisions that are listed under the other motions tab, which is on the last page of the changesheet in addition to a couple of remaining items that the court discussed earlier today, which is decision on DA salaries as well as the, I believe there's one other additional item remaining. So those are the remaining items under the changesheet.
Okay.
And we can do them in whichever order.
Okay. I think the-
Looking for like the total.
Say again.
We're looking for like the total of what we did this morning, right?
Do you have a tally of what, I believe the proposed rate with the changes we adopted this morning was 127.
Somewhere around 1.3.
Yes, so currently the tax rate based off of what the courts approved so far is 0.187869. That is the current tax rate and that is about 4.113% above the no new revenue rate. And so that is slightly lower than the recommended rate due to the savings from the DPS positions.
Yeah, that's what the, that's what the using fund balance for, yeah.
That would be using unappropriate contingency for all of the other items that were approved by Commissioner's Court.
And that's what, and that amount was 1.3 something.
That is 1,318,284.
Just, this is where, this is where things add up, right? So we spent over 1.3 million this morning.
Yes, and really about 700,000 of that was sort of built into contingency already for the court appointed representation budget since we take that into consideration when creating the contingency budget.
Yeah. Well, that's the M and O only.
I thought it was 180447.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong thing.
Yeah.
Am I right?
Just so that we're talking the same numbers, it's the total, the no new revenue is .180 essentially.
447.
Yeah, 447.
Correct.
And we're currently-
We're at 18945.
Yeah, we're currently at 18.9 cents. It's the no new revenue is way down there. That's, that's like 12 or 13 million dollars to get down there.
Yeah, to get to there.
Yes.
It's 12 and a half. I would propose that if there was a, as far as the adjusting the pay scale, there would be two, that 4% on the slide and 2% the cost of living for 6% and that 5% come through the rate and then the other percentage come through the fund balance. That's what I would, that would be my recommendation.
Does that include the DA's?
And that would include the base level of the DA's and then we would any additional increase for the other-
The good news is that-
4%, I would, I would support the DA's request, but I think I would do 4%. Take that from, to not hit the rate anymore, I would take that as a, from the contingency.
Judge, if I may, I think we lost Commissioner Edmondson.
Per, okay, so we will-
She popped on a second ago and then popped back off, I think.
Okay, they're going to re, they're going to get her back. It's okay. Well, thank you for mentioning that. We'll get her, we'll get her back. We'll pause.
So it's 4% moving them.
I'd move the pay scale for 4%.
And then 2, cost of living.
Cost of living too, uh huh. Turn that mic off.
I just need to get a water. Need some water. Over there off 35 by the Unicorn, like all those new restaurants right over there. They brought me a hamburger from there last week and I loved it. So Judge, was that a motion after we get everything? Okay, I'll second that if we're, I'm keeping an open mind depending on what else we discuss.
Minimize any impact to the rate.
Because I do not want to go over that. No new revenue rate.
447.
Yeah, 447.
Correct.
And we're currently-
We're at 18945.
Yeah, we're currently at 18.9 cents. It's the no new revenue is way down there. That's, that's like 12 or 13 million dollars to get down there.
Yeah, to get to there.
Yes.
It's 12 and a half. I would propose that if there was a, as far as the adjusting the pay scale, there would be two, that 4% on the slide and 2% the cost of living for 6% and that 5% come through the rate and then the other percentage come through the fund balance. That's what I would, that would be my recommendation.
Does that include the DA's?
And that would include the base level of the DA's and then we would any additional increase for the other-
The good news is that-
4%, I would, I would support the DA's request, but I think I would do 4%. Take that from, to not hit the rate anymore, I would take that as a, from the contingency.
Judge, if I may, I think we lost Commissioner Edmondson.
Per, okay, so we will-
She popped on a second ago and then popped back off, I think.
Okay, they're going to re, they're going to get her back. It's okay. Well, thank you for mentioning that. We'll get her, we'll get her back. We'll pause.
So it's 4% moving them.
I'd move the pay scale for 4%.
And then 2, cost of living.
Cost of living too, uh huh. Turn that mic off.
Over there off 35 by the Unicorn, like all those new restaurants right over there. They brought me a hamburger from there last week and I loved it. So Judge, was that a motion after we get everything? Okay, I'll second that if we're, I'm keeping an open mind depending on what else we discuss.
Minimize any impact to the rate.
Because I do not want to go over that. No new revenue rate.
I don't know where she's at.
Judge, if I can get just clarification on the, for the DA item, if the court were to do a total of 6%, do we, is the, will the DA just do a total of 10? Is that, would we just be increasing a total of 10? Okay.
10.
And another four.
Are they getting her on the phone?
Can we hear? Uh oh, darn battery. We just put her on the phone? Yeah.
We'll just take a recess.
You want to use a telephone?
All right, we reconvened from our recess. We had some technical difficulties. We got it. I believe we got that remedied. We're all here.
Can Diane hear us?
Commissioner, can you hear? Can you hear us loud and clear? We can see you. Thank you for your patience. We got that all worked out.
I am so sorry. We're on board number three.
That's all right. No problem. So I was saying that if we were. Hey, Bob.
Hey, Bob.
I was saying that if we.
Hey, Bob.
Will you wave at Bob for us?
At least he's feeling. At least he's feeling good. That's what matters.
And we're glad. I was saying.
Wearing clothes.
I was saying that if we. I was recommended that if we did over the 5 percent, which is already calculated into our rate proposal from the Budget Office, that the, if it was to go up to the 6 percent, that'd come from our fund balance for this year so that it would reduce any impacts to the budget.
Can I clarify that?
Yes.
Judge, so you're saying take it out of fund balance.
For this year.
So, but it, but it's a, it would be a recur. It's a recurring expense if we're doing it.
It could be. Yes. And I checked with the auditor in the Budget Office and they said it was good and it would not impact us with the rating agencies.
I'm not.
We could, we could roll it into the rate too this year, but I was just.
Well, I don't want to raise the rate, but I was just saying it was, can we take it out? Can we, can we, can we, I think there's some contingency that we have allocated for projects, that we could fund those projects with fund balance.
That's what they were going to do.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're going to swap it out.
Okay. It just, it sounded like what you were saying, let's just pay for it out of fund balance and then next year, what do you do? Because we can't just always pay for it out of fund balance. But you're, it is a swap.
It is a swap.
Yeah. Okay. That's what I wanted to clarify.
And we're just, we're talking a small percentage of the fund balance. So it'd be real easy.
Sure. Sure. I'm not worried. The fund balance I'm not worried about for this year. I, I just worry about it for recurring sources.
Judge, I did not hear Alejandro's presentation. I heard Michelle's. With all the new things that we approved today, has he been able to tell us what rate we can go to or not incur a rollback?
None of the proposals would impact, would, would cause a rollback. Okay. But, but do you want to, Alejandro, would you please restate your calculations?
Yes, Commissioner. The current tax rate for next year is at 0.187869, and that is well below the voter approval rates. So the voter approval rate is 0.192402. So we are well below the voter approval rate, which is, if we exceed that rate, that, that's what would cause the, the, trigger that election.
Thank you.
And that's just a little below what you had as a recommended rate, which was what, 18.8 something?
Yes, that is a reduction of .000137 cents because of the reduction in the DPS expenses.
Right. Right.
Judge?
Yes, please.
Thank you for the, to push the 6 percent, which I, I think is wonderful. I think that's great. I still have a, a desire to do some type of one-time stifling, whatever, pay, whatever you want to call it, for the employees. And obviously willing to, I don't know, call it negotiate, the, the number down since we've now bumped up from 5 percent to 6 percent, which is a recurring, and which is great for our employees going forward. So then I would propose a 6 percent increase as you did, but then I would add a 2 percent, or a $2,000 one-time pay per employee. That's what I'm, that's what I would be interested in looking at.
So before we got cut off technically over here, the motion was the 6 percent with the.
Your 6 percent?
Was the 6 percent. Was the 6 percent. And there's a second, the motion by the chair and it was seconded by the Commissioner Mitchell.
Okay.
So if we want to talk about that, I don't know if there's support for that or not, but we can definitely see if there's a, if there's support beyond that.
I.
I'll be happy to discuss it before we vote.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can support that. 6 percent.
6 percent. Okay. So the discussion was about 6 percent. Okay. So was there any other discussion about as far as additional, additional plus other money?
Well, I, I've made it clear that I, I would, I think it would be great to be able to use the non-recurring dollars to give some back to the employees as well. But I am supportive of the 6 percent for the salary adjustment this year.
So I don't know if, Commissioner Edmondson, if you heard what I was asking.
All right, we reconvened from our recess. We had some technical difficulties. We got it, I believe we got that remedied. We're all here.
Can Diane hear us?
Commissioner, can you hear? Can you hear us loud and clear? We can see you. Thank you for your patience. We got that all worked out.
I am so sorry. We're on voice number three.
That's all right. No problem.
There's Bob.
So I was saying that if we were, hey Bob, I was saying that if we...
Hey Bob.
Will you wave at Bob for us?
At least he's feeling, at least he's feeling good. That's what matters.
We're glad, I was saying.
Wearing clothes.
I was saying that if we, I was recommending that if we did over the 5%, which is already calculated into our rate proposal from the Budget Office, that if it was to go up to the 6%, did that come from our fund balance for this year so that it would reduce any impacts to the budget?
Can I clarify that?
Yes.
Judge, so you're saying take it out of fund balance?
For this year.
So, but it, but it's a, it would be recurring, it's a recurring expense if we're doing this.
It could be, yes. And I checked with the auditor in the Budget Office and they said it was good and it would not impact us with the rating agencies.
I'm not...
We could, we could roll it into the rate too this year, but I was just trying to ease into it.
Well, I don't want to raise the rate, but I was just saying it was, can we take it out? Can we, can we, can we, I think there's some contingency that we have allocated for projects, that we could fund those projects with fund balance.
That's what they were going to do.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're going to swap it out.
Okay, it just, it sounded like what you were saying, let's just pay for it out of fund balance and then next year what do you do? Because we can't just always pay for it out of fund balance. But you're, it is a swap.
It is a swap.
Yeah, okay. That's what I wanted to clarify.
And we're just, we're talking a small percentage of the fund balance, so it'd be real easy to...
Sure, sure. I'm not worried. The fund balance I'm not worried about for this year. I, I just worry about it for recurring resources.
Judge, I did not hear Alejandro's presentation. I heard Michelle's. With all the new things that we approved today, has he been able to tell us what rate we can go to and not incur a rollback?
None of the proposals would impact, would, would cause a rollback, okay? But, but do you want to, Alejandro, would you please restate your calculations?
No, no, it's not that. I'm on my own case. Yes, Commissioner, the current tax rate for next year is at 0.187869, and that is well below the voter approval rates. So the voter approval rate is 0.192402. So we are well below the voter approval rate, which is, if we exceed that rate, that, that's what would cause the, the, trigger that election.
Thank you.
And that's just a little below what you had as a recommended rate, which was what, 18.8 something?
Yes, that is a reduction of .000137 cents because of the reduction in the DPS expenses.
Right, right.
Judge?
Yes, please.
Thank you for the, to push the 6%, which I think is wonderful. I think that's great. I still have a desire to do some type of one-time stifling, whatever, pay, whatever you want to call it, for the employees. And obviously willing to, I don't know, call it negotiate, the, the number down since we've now bumped up from 5% to 6%, which is a reoccurring and which is great for our employees going forward. So then I would propose a 6% increase as you did, but then I would add a 2%, sorry, $2,000 one-time pay per employee. That's what I'm, that's what I would be interested in looking at. Oh, okay. Well then, I guess we'll have to...
So before we got cut off technically over here, the motion was the 6% with the...
Just 6%?
Was the 6%, was the 6%. And there's a second, the motion by the Chair and it was seconded by the Commissioner Mitchell.
Okay.
So if we want to talk about that, I don't know if there's support for that or not, but we can definitely see if there's a, if there's support beyond that. I'll be happy to discuss it before we vote.
Sure. Thank you.
Well, as I...
Judge, I can support that, 6%.
6%, okay. So discussion was about 6%. Okay. So was there any other discussion about as far as additional, additional plus other money?
Well, I, I've made it clear that I, I wouldn't, I think it would be great to be able to use the non-recurring dollars to give some back to the employees as well. But I am supportive of the 6% for the salary adjustment this year.
So I don't know if, Commissioner Edmondson, if you heard what I was asking is, is obviously the 6% and then with that still asking to add instead of 4,000 per employee, 2,000 as a one-time pay for employees?
Yes, I heard that. May I point out that just like in the legislature, when there was an old words, they look at during the spending, pay back to the taxpayers. And I think we can kind of accomplish that here if we keep our tax rate low. They can give our employees a 6% raise and then what we're, we're not kind of get some back to our taxpayers because we're lowering the tax a lot.
Yeah, I, I get that. The, the, what we're adding as far as the one-time doesn't affect the taxpayer whatsoever. It's, it's coming from, my perspective, it'd be coming from the interest that we've made on the ARPA funds. That doesn't affect the taxpayer. We can't, we can't give back this money to the taxpayer. It's, it's how we decide to spend it, of course, obviously. But yeah, there's no way to give that back.
Yeah.
Well, I understand the perception of the taxpayers may be different than what is reality.
Sure, of course. And I'd be happy to talk to any taxpayer at any time for the reason my decision is to try to do this.
Okay. I appreciate your advocacy.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate your advocacy. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye?
I'm saying, I'm saying aye, but...
Oh, begrudgingly.
Judge, will you please restate?
Appreciate it.
Restate that for Ms. Edmondson.
It would be to slide the scale, 4% to do a cost of living for two. And we had the 5% budgeted into the budget and the, the additional 1% would come from the fund balance with the appropriate swap outs related to projects as necessary to keep, to minimize rate impact for this year. So that would be the, that would be the motion. And we have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries you.
Nay.
Nay. Okay.
In favor, one opposed.
Four in favor, one opposed.
I'm, I'm still on the, I'd like to do the, the one-time, but so I am, I am agreeing to the 6%, but if, if we're not going to do the one-time, I guess I have to be a no also.
So you voted no? Okay, so three in favor and two?
Well, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, it's okay. I'm, I'm very comfortable with the 6%.
Yeah, absolutely.
A bonus?
Yeah, no, you're...
No, no.
It's okay.
I, I heard it. I'm, I'm, and I'm, now that we've agreed to that, I'm 100% behind it.
We go on to the next, the next item.
Yep.
Move on.
Judge, can we now reconsider that elections item?
Hang on, so you are voting against the pay raise? Am I clear?
Well, I'm voting, I'm just saying no to the motion that was presented. I'm, I'm good with the 6%.
If we, if we wanted to break it out, I'd be happy to vote for just the 6%.
I thought we were...
Oh, I'm not voting against the pay raise.
Let's go on.
Voting for a pay raise and...
We've got three to two vote. Let's move on.
All right. Let's go to, let's go to your spreadsheet under page nine. Approval on the, on page nine, it's a, approval of facility, on page nine of the green. Approval of facility improvement request to be funded from the permanent improvement fund. Is there any questions or do we have a motion for approval? This has been prepared.
I move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mitchell. The Chair will second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is approval of the pay structure, which we already just did. The third item is approval of the salary revisions for fiscal year 2025 included in the recommended budget. Salary revisions can include reclassifications, market salary adjustments, market reclassifications, equity adjustments, and job title changes. These are the things that are prepared by the Human Resources Department and gone through. These are the reclasses, et cetera.
That have already been...
It's already in the recommended budget.
These are the recommended ones from HR. The Chair will move for approval.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. These are the new positions. It's approval of the new positions in the recommended budget. 29 full-time positions and two part-time and to full-time positions.
Move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Falconer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is approval of the transferred slots report for the list of positions being transferred to a different cost center. Chair will move for approval.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is approval of deleted slot report for a list of positions being deleted as part of the fiscal 2025 budget.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer. Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is approval of the report of ARPA-funded slots absorbed into the county budget.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer. Chair will second. Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is approval of the ARPA-funded deleted slot report.
I move approve.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell. Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is approval to reduce the non-departmental unappropriated contingency to fund applicable Commissioners Court-approved items as part of the budget workshops. And so these are, Alejandro, these are the items related this morning. And then we, we actually will decrease the unappropriated. Do you want to speak to this topic, sir?
Yeah, so basically we would simply be reducing non-departmental unappropriated contingency to be able to fund the items that were approved today by Commissioners Court during budget workshops.
Okay. Before we do, actually, let's not vote on that action item. Let's go back to the elections.
Yes, poll workers.
We do have it on page, members, it's in your green folder. Back to page eight of nine, Elections Administration. This is the pay for elections workers. Did we want to modify that accordingly to match the increase in what we did our...
6%?
Yes.
And move, move approval for...
We have a motion by Commissioner Falconer. Second by, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Is there any other items besides that one on the contingency, Alejandro, that we have left remaining?
Now, was there a vote on the DA?
The DA was...
We got to wait until that was the next one.
What are those desires on the District Attorney's office?
I think, um, yeah, I'll make the motion to do the 10 total, which would be six that, that they're going to receive and then four extra.
That's how I understand it.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I would have...
The total is 10%?
Yes, ma'am.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, so those are budget workshop items. And did we vote on the contingency balance? We did not, because we went back into the elections, so we need to make a motion.
Yes, please.
Chair will make, will move for approval as to revise the contingency allocation accordingly. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, so we're done with that. So next, so that is, let's go to 7F, which is discussion and approval of proposing a tax, a property tax rate for tax year 2025 for Denton County. Any appropriate action, Alejandro?
Yes, so the current tax rate for FY 2025 as it stands is 0.187869, and that is 4.113% above the non-revenue rate. And my, we simply need a motion to propose a tax rate in the, in that amount per $100 valuation for tax year 2024 for Denton County.
0.1...
187869.
Yes, it is going to be 0.187869.
I'd move that we adopt a tax rate of 0.187869.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Falconer. Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion?
And just for clarification, this is to propose the, propose the tax rate.
Correct. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 7G, approval of setting Tuesday, September the 10th, 2024 at 10:00 a.m. As the day the Commissioners Court will hold a public hearing for discussion of the proposed fiscal property 2025, excuse me, tax rate for the fiscal year 2025, proposed budget located at the Denton County Administrative Courthouse Number One, Courthouse Drive, Commissioners Courtroom, Denton, Texas 76208. We have a motion by Commissioner Mitchell. Second, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Is there any other items?
No, sir. That, that is everything for budget.
All right. I want to thank our county clerk staff for being here and keeping us lined out as well. So I want to thank the Budget Office for getting us to this point and for all the people who participated in the project and the budget and the process. We appreciate all your diligence and patience. Thank you so much. We are adjourned.
Thank you all.